So I'm gonna call the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to order. This is a special meeting to continue the discussion draft of our ordinance ninety-five-five for land divisions. Last meeting, we went through articles one through four. Today, we're gonna do five through eight. And then go back and pick up any revisions, you know, in the original. So that hopefully by September ninth, which is, I think it's the ninth is our um, eighth, eighth is our public hearing on this. We will have a draft that's in good form. All right, Walt, do you wanna take us through Article Five?
Walt, you're muted.
Oh, you're muted.
Got it. Um. Okay, here we go. We're on Article Five, which is partitions. Um, this stuff is pretty straightforward. In fact, one thing I found out doing a lot of these older codes and bringing them up to date is that most of them have pretty good bones. In other words, a pretty good structure with information. They just need to be updated and I think just organize it a little cleaner. Um, and this certainly applies to the partition section. Uh, this revision here incorporates most of the uh current regulations and also clarifies the decision criteria. I think the biggest change from our current code is that these are type-two applications. These would be reviewed by staff with an appeal to the Planning Commission. And we'll get into the types when we get to section, Article Seven, on what that means specifically. But the submittal requirements are pretty consistent with what we have. Um, I've cleaned it up a bit. One thing I did add, if you notice under C, uh, for submittal under item three, it's been my experience that some folks get most of the stuff together for an application, but maybe not each and every detail. I was thinking a little flexibility would be in mind that if there's enough information for us to go ahead and process a partition, um, uh, I'm willing to accept, say, a semi-complete application. Again, this is something I've done in other communities. Uh, you're welcome to keep it or drop it as you see fit, but um, uh, quite often, and I'll just be blunt, I work with communities that people come up with a uh, assessor map, show me where the line's gonna be and give some estimations on uh, the location of the structure, et cetera. And that gives me enough to work with to at least help them out through the process. So I did include that, and again, I just wanna point that out to you. Uh, the decision criteria, um, pretty much parallels what you would see in most other codes for uh, decision criterias for land divisions. Basically, to the lots meet the minimum requirements, uh, all dimension requirements. Um, we have some general design standards that apply in Article Two. Um, uh, if there's an existing structure on the site, the setbacks cannot be reduced unless there's a variance. And again, I mentioned last time, a variance brings uh, the application to you. And there has to be some evidence of sufficient public uh, facilities. Uh, that's usually preceded with commentary or letters from Public Works and um, the Halum Bay. And also, if, if it's a highway project, say, oh, dot. But it's pretty much straightforward, and this thing goes through the improvement requirements, improvement procedures, how they're done, and finally, the process for doing a final plat. Final plats, again, are handled at on a, excuse me, staff level. Um, and that basically summarizes the partition portion of this. Again, it's pretty consistent with what you currently have. Uh, the major change is that these are staff-level reviews with the right to appeal to the Planning Commission. And also note that if there's a variance application, say, to reduce the lot size or some dimension or setback, uh, that automatically brings the application to the Planning Commission.
Any questions? Comments? I had a question about whether the um, a plat would need to be recorded, and then I turned the page. Sure enough, there needs to be a survey in order to record, so I'm happy with um, what we have here. And I'm perfectly fine with the city manager waiving some of the requirements. As long as it's fair. Always fair. Um, can I just do a quick round of okay?
Okay.
Okay from Karen, okay from Lee.
I have a question. So Walt, this is all subject to a type-two review. And, and, because I understand that the application, notice is given of the application.
Right.
To adjoining landowner, anybody. Notice goes out of the application. And then there's a follow-on notice of the decision with the right of appeal.
Right, just, again, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail when we get to seven, but you're right, that's the basic scenario. We send out notice of the request, in other words, the formal application, all the information. And uh, that's sent out to uh, property owners within a certain radius. Um. Excuse me if I chuckle with my granddaughter running back and forth here. Um, um, and after, they have fourteen days in which to comment. And staff would then take uh, the application and any comments received and incorporate that in a staff report. So in other words, if someone says, I'm concerned with A, B, and C, the report has to address all those concerns, just like it were a public hearing. So we do that through the land use staff report process. When that report is done, then notice of the decision is mailed to the applicant and anyone who submitted comments. And I also note that agencies may submit comments as well, and they would get a copy of the decision. So you are correct. There's two notices. First notice goes to area owners. A second notice goes to the applicant and those who submitted comments.
Yeah, not having been through any of this before, what, what kind of objections would you get to partition from adjoining property owners or nearby property owners? What's the typical objection?
I don't like the name. I don't like their house. I'm, I'm not sure what are they gonna do with it? Can you tell me how many square footage the home is gonna be? And if I were a neighbor, I would probably think along those lines too. But bear in mind, the decision has to be focused on, do they meet the criteria? And that's noted in the notice that they have to, just like we start a public hearing here and Karen goes through, you gotta you know, make sure you uh, address the criteria, same thing. So I've had a number of those type. And also, house color was a big one. And I would simply respond, while I respect your concerns, uh, the city does not have any regulations regarding, say, house color, and I would be sure to put that finding in the staff report. But that's usually where it comes to be, or like, why are we dividing this property? Oh, another good one, I have a lot of squirrels there and I'd like the wildlife to stay, but I don't wanna pay taxes on their property, so that's yet.
Okay, and since we're amending the zoning ordinance to allow all sorts of new types of dwellings, you know, on a parcel, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, all these things, that th- those are no longer acceptable grounds for opposi- opposition to this subsequent partition.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Right. They have to show where, in the application, the lots are not big enough. Or if they're aware of information on the site, that doesn't, I mean, I've seen some of these. There's an easement running through there, but usually that's simple to address. But they have to show where the application fails to meet the criteria, not that they're opposed to the partition itself.
Okay, and forgive me for being naive about all of this, but I, I am assuming that there's already been the decision, for example, to allow townhomes on this plot. And all we're doing with the partition is to make each of those townhomes uh, uh, a separate fee simple properties, so that there could, that ownership could follow. But we've already decided there will be a townhouse there. So the partition process isn't to throw belated objections, there's a townhouse going in here. It's, it's only, a- all the partition is talking about is now we're making this into four fee simple properties that each can be owned. Or like a duplex, so it's, we're already gonna have a duplex there. And this will simply enable it to be two separately-owned dwellings as opposed to one-owned structure with a renter on half of it. Are you following me?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out what stage the notice and, and what sort of objections are gonna come, but all of that stuff's already been decided.
Exactly.
How many dwellings?
In fact, from a planner's perspective, partitions and subdivisions are one of the easiest things you can do. They're pretty much check the box. Do you meet the requirement or don't you? And these certainly follow through with the uh, state uh, direction for clear and objective standards. So unless there's something that we missed or whatever, I've never seen a partition successfully appealed. No, I cannot think of a partition I've done that there was no issue with regard to the partition. Maybe the neighbor didn't like it, that there might be a house coming in next door, but there were certainly no basis of overturning the uh, approval.
Okay, thank you.
So could I, could I just add on to that, that potentially someone could do a partition? Well, technically, um, a partition can only be up, create up to three lots out of one, so townhomes would be a different story if you were doing four. But you could partition uh, an acre site into one-third, one-third, one-third acres with no intention of building anything on them at the moment they're partitioned. You just wanna be able to sell off part of your land. So, so they could be just a plain land division with no thought yet about it.
That is, that is usually the common one that I've run into. Someone has like a half an acre of land and they wanna divide it in half. And it's straightforward, and then somewhere down the road, they sell it to a developer who builds a home or a contractor who builds the home. So yes, this is just a formal process to ensure that when the plat's recorded, the individual parcels or lots comply with the city requirements. This is, this is oversight, if you will.
Okay, I'm all the more comfortable.
Okay, um, John, did you have any comments? You'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I had a quick question for Walt. Um, we are allowing the city manager to waive some of the requirements of the application. Um, but that doesn't relieve the applicant from providing whatever it is that the uh manager waived. At what point along the process does, whatever was waived, when does that information come back into the process?
Well, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of submittals. For example, let's say they went ahead and submitted the plat or, or proposed partition. And they forgot to put a north arrow and date it. I'm not going to penalize them for that. I could look at the zoning map and figure out where north is. And so it, it's, it's, we could be very sticky and, and reject it and have a formal letter and say, please do this. Or if it's something that it takes me five or ten minutes to fill in the details, I see it as a way to move it forward. And also, I think, you know, customer service, if you will, John.
Well, I completely agree with that, Walt, and, and um, our current city manager certainly has the wherewithal to determine whether it's a relevant piece of information or not. Um, I was just wondering if that piece of information is not there, whether somebody from the city just pencils in a north arrow or a dimension or something like that. Does it get included back into the process somehow?
It does, and, and, and it's very simple to do something like that. For example, if they don't have any information on public facilities, not gonna accept that application, because I mean, that is uh, decision of criteria, it is criterion number four. And so they have to submit evidence of that. But again, something simple. I guess I wanna avoid being a total bureaucrat on this. I wanna be
And I completely agree with you, and uh, and the whole concept of, don't be too much of a nitpicker if it's not critical to the process. I, you know, I I guess we'll just, I, I don't see a good way to add any verbiage in there that sort of defines what's acceptable and what's not, but I, I guess, and I agree with the concept of just trusting the staff.
Well, as they say, bureaucrats cut red tape lengthwise, so I wanna avoid that. So I wanna be a reasonable bureaucrat, how's that?
Well, I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, I'm in on this. Uh, Article Five.
Frank, glad you're here with us. Um, have you been able to hear the discussion in full so far? Maybe Frank can't hear me.
Oh, no, I could hear. I was trying, I was trying to unmute my telephone. No, I missed the, the, the bulk of the beginning of it. Sorry for getting here late.
That's, that's okay, no worries. Um, do you have any questions or concerns going forward on this Article Five?
No.
Okay. All right, then I think we can move on to Article Six, yes? With no changes?
Okay, um.
Sorry, I'm getting my coffee dropped on.
Okay, um. Article Six is subdivisions. And these are processed just like partitions, and that these are a staff-level review. And this is entirely consistent with state law, um, both for partitions and subdivisions. Um, consistent. I will note that, again, this is creating four or more lots within a calendar year. And if you recall, Article One talked about administration, if there's a large parcel that has the potential for several more lots, uh, other than, say, maybe dividing it into two, uh, we can process that as a subdivision. In other words, we wanna make sure if there's a potential for a number of additional homes that adequate facilities and other services are available to the property. So I just wanna put that little footnote in there. Um, the subdivision, again, much like the um, partition uh, section, is basically consistent with our current regulations. And um, in fact, I've already done one subdivision on, I think, Herron's Rest. And the material was pretty much applicable in terms of how to process that I didn't see any major um, issues. And in fact, most of what is uh, in your current ninety-five-dash-five is really what to do after an approval. And a lot of it has to do with uh, the process of getting engineering plans approved, having those reviewed and construction plans, et cetera. And then going ahead and uh, building the subdivision and then recording the document. So if anything, um, these, this Article Six in your current ninety-five-dash-five are very similar. Uh, the one thing here that I did put a little more effort into is the decision criteria. There seem to be other places. Let me put it this way, it wasn't centrally located to, I think, make it easier for staff and also an applicant. And then like the partition, the big change is that this is a staff-level review. I will say this. Um, these submittal requirements are stringent, and that's absolutely essential. Because there's a lot of moving pieces in a subdivision. And um, there's a lot of scrutiny by the affected agencies to make sure that the property can be property serviced. So there's no fudge factor for a subdivision. Either we get the data or we don't. Also, uh, phasing in the current document was not very clear. This lays out a phasing option, a schedule, if you will, and the criteria for determining whether or not phasing is appropriate. Or actually, criteria that you can attach to allow a phasing. For example, if they're gonna phase it, you wanna make sure that the infrastructure that's put in, in the first phase is adequate to continue the facilities for the second, third, and all subsequent phases. You do not wanna have a developer to go back and dig up pipe to go ahead and make sure everything else works, works. So in many cases, a phased project requires a lot more engineering work uh, upfront. Um, let's see, and also you, with a phased project, you cannot have temporary services. These have to be permanent in-ground services uh, for the project. Now, subdivisions must comply with Article Two, which is layout design, but also must comply with Article Three, which is the streets, but also
Little Tukla, Marshall District.
Yeah, yeah, it was from, coming down to La Vida, it's almost seemed like fifteen, it's kinda, that's about my comfort speed, you know?
Oh, that live stream was you, Josh?
Yeah, you got, yeah, yours opening.
Okay. Okay. Mike.
Right, for you. Slid Street, it's here.
Okay, so if we're back in action.
Yeah, Josh will get people up on screen in a minute, but we can, on there.
We convene our meeting. Oh, there's some of us. Sorry about the delay. Um, apparently, we had some more fun with the internet. So we were right in the middle of talking to Frank, I think, when we lost. No, we had moved on to um, subdivisions. And Walt was going through the requirements. Is that right? Who we left off? Okay.
Now that I've regained my composure, um, uh, let's see, okay, we talked about phase development. Now, we're getting into design requirements, and as I noted, um, Article Two and Article Three also apply to subdivisions. These are additional design requirements that talk about connectivity and traffic circulation and some other design standards for like cul-de-sacs. One thing I wanna note is there will be probably additional refinement on this section to make sure that whatever adopted by the city council, there's consistency and also consistency with the TSP. So if you see a number that doesn't look right, um, please bear with us for, for kind of the the final version, but we're gonna go over these numbers again. In fact, I had to do that with the street information, uh, just to, I know there were differences between the original TSP and the final adopted document that I had to make some changes on. So anyway, this is just things that are, uh, I think fairly consistent with what we have. I just wanna assure the Planning Commission that there will be some further kind of refinement, if you will. Finally, the wrap-up in the subdivision, everything from improvements to improvement requirements, procedures, the form and the final plat review is all consistent with what you currently have. And again, um, the only difference is the final plat is again handled by staff. So this is a staff uh, uh, approach. Now, let's say there was a subdivision that came in and there was a variance involved for some factor. And the Planning Commission would be looking at that. Um, I would think that the it would still be appropriate for staff to go ahead and review that level. Um, unless, say, the Planning Commission specifically wants to see the final plat. You can certainly, you certainly have the authority. But as long as there's enough information in the decision to um, make it clear what is being proposed and the variance approval, uh, it could still be handled on a staff level. And then it will be done, um, again, that ends. See, anything else I missed on that one? Oh, yeah, one typical thing, if you don't get things recorded in time, you gotta come back to the um, uh, you, you, it does require a brand-new application. So, again, pretty consistent with what you have, except for the staff level of review and inclusion work on, you know, streets and uh, lots of signs. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, when we were offline, we were talking about um, in the design, subdivision design requirements, just referring to the transportation system plan rather than including specific numbers in the grid here so that everything would refer back and, and update automatically as the TSP is updated. Just, is that what you were thinking when you were talking about references to TSP?
That is something that can be done. Um, in fact, it avoids a problem that if you ever amend the TSP, then you have to be cognizant of what you have in your codes. Then you would have to amend those as well. It might be simpler to do it that way, um, but it will be very specific as to a standard, maybe a page or some simple reference, um, for the uh, um, applicant. So that's, that can be done. I tend to like to see everything together instead of going back and forth. But if the Planning Commission wants to work it that way, we can do it that way.
Just thinking whatever makes the most sense for staff, because they'll be the ones that are um, reviewing these applications.
Well, one advantage from a staff perspective, going through the staff report, it's real simple for um, to come into, let's see here, uh, to simply go under item, say, six-point-oh-two-oh, uh, sub-four, access and spacing for Highway one-on-one. Instead of referring, you know, and this refers to this, and that section says the following. It's right here in black and white. And it's pretty easy on a staff report level, just to say, based on the um, submitted requirements, whatever, the uh, they do comply with these uh, standards. And it, it just makes it a little simpler from standpoint of writing a staff report, I would guess. We could, we could kinda scratch our head on that a little bit more. Um, I understand the advantage, you only have to amend once. But since you're not amending the TSP very often, might be a little bit easier just to go ahead and put everything in the code, but that's, that's kinda based on my experience.
Is the TSP adopted as an ordinance? Or as a policy goal?
Policy is adopted by resolution.
So, so it, there needs to be an ordinance. So, so it, there needs to be an ordinance that adopts the specifics of the TSP plan, that doesn't.
So then it would make sense to have it in.
In here as ordinance, right? So, I, I, that's the only reason I think you'd want it in here. You know, if the TSP is not a, is, is an ordinance, then, then he, that would be fine. But probably this is the enabling legislation for the TSP.
Sounds like.
Yeah, the specifics in this document.
So you need to have it in here, I think.
Couldn't you just have in here a reference to the, the follow-on ordinance? Rather than the TSP. He- he- here's my concern, as, as a lawyer and judge over the years, I have been in countless disputes where that there are conflicting statutes, because, you know, once, they're both addressing the same subject, but they say different things. And what you put in here, like we have on page twenty-three of this draft, is not going to be as specific as the enabling ordinance. And there will be, the, the potential for inconsistencies or even conflicts is, is right. So I always think it's simpler to just reference the more specific and, and ultimately controlling thing and, and not try and replicate it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, is this actually the specifics? And the TSP is the, like the comprehensive plan, a policy document?
Yeah, that's, so that was my understanding of what it is. So we shouldn't reference the TSP, we should reference the follow-on.
The facts in here.
Or, or we'll just reference the ordinance that's gonna have the details.
It's this, this is the ordinance, I think, of TSP, is that right?
Well, so, ish, um, hear what Tom is saying. So, we have not actually adopted the ordinance amendments to implement TSP policies yet. And those go across multiple ordinances, so it's not just zoning. It goes to street standards, there's other ninety-one eight, there's a number of them that it impacts.
In each of those specific sections would have to have the detail, which is the enabling legislation. Okay, so I think, I guess from what you're saying, I would say that you need to have it in here. Cause this is where it becomes the ordinance.
Could you say, could you reference the TSP and enabling ordinances and capture it all that way? So, what I'm worried about, and I don't know how detailed those other things will be, but here you, you have a hundred feet. But you go to the other ordinance when eventually it comes out and it says a hundred feet from a specific location, or a hundred feet with these exceptions. And now you've got that there and you've got something else here. And, and what does the applicant have to comply with and what do we review, what does staff review for?
What is the TSP an ordinance? I don't know, it's, it's a policy goal document. If it's adopted, what, if the council adopts it, do they adopt it as an ordinance or as a policy goal?
It's adopted by a resolution, so it's a policy document.
So it, it's not enforceable as an ordinance, tell you incorporated in the, this kind of a document, I think, Tom.
Right, so the ordinance amendments that we have prepared, that actually planning commission reviewed, um, include those changes to the various ordinances that it impacts. They just have yet to be adopted.
And, um, by analogy to the world I do deal in, you could say to comply with this statute in any implementing regulations, cause the regulations often follow the statute with rulemaking.
But I, I think this is the implementing regulation. It's not the TSP, is that right?
Right, the TSP operates like the comprehensive plan, so it's the overarching policy document. This implements, supplements of it.
Okay, so there's not gonna be some other ordinance that is going to speak to the same subject as what's here.
Right. Not specific to just the TSP. This will all change when we have a municipal code, then we can reference differently. But maybe what I could ask is, I hear both of you and I can confer with, uh, my team. And we can figure out the simplest way to do it, because it's, it's difficult for us when one change gets made. Then we have to go through and make sure it's changed everywhere, so we'll want it to be efficient, whatever that is. But I, I would agree, it probably needs to be done through an enabling ordinance in order to make it enforceable.
Well, I, I don't have any problems with this as presented, so long as we uh, eliminate the potential for inconsistencies with whatever other end or ordinances will be applicable to the subdivision.
None of it.
However, you, it, it's inconsistent with the block standards that the commission recommended. That need to adjust it, I think Walt understands that he was.
We want to fix, fix this to be consistent with standards that are, that are only a policy.
Right, which has also got me thinking, we need to also adopt a TSP ordinance amendment spout around the same time, because those will be different. So, trust me, my brain's floating right now.
Right, but you're just back, you needed, need a day to look at yourself back in. Okay, any, um, any other questions on this? Did we already do our thumbs up, thumbs down?
What are, what are we on? We on six?
We are on Article Six subdivisions.
I mean, are you asking for, are we finishing with six?
That's, yes, that's what I'm asking. Do you have more, do you have issues that you want to go over before? I think Walt, you got to the end of your presentation, did you not, Walt?
Well, that ends for six and, and unless there's any questions, move on to seven, eight, and nine.
So let's see if there are any questions, that's, cause it seems like there, you might have some need.
I'm just curious, Walt, uh, on, uh, page twenty-five, six oh three O B one. You, you mentioned a moment ago that you thought that all the guts of this section were in the previous ninety-five-five. And I don't recall, um, number one, frontage improvements. I don't recall the old ninety-five-five, um, suggesting that subdivision, street frontage had to be improved. And my example for that is the Highlands. There are no sidewalks on the frontage. And so this language would suggest there needed to be sidewalks and curbs. There is stormwater, there's no sidewalks or curbs on the frontage of the Highlands.
Well, okay, that's a, no, thank you, thank you for, for raising that point. Um, the basic language that we currently have in the code has to do with compliance with city public works standards. And so whatever was in place at the time, which is kind of interesting, that there would not be any sidewalks, uh, which I think would be consistent with, uh, TSP requirements or, um, uh, pedestrian access. But the frontage improvements are basically part and parcel of building a street. I, I, maybe the language is a little confusing, I, I, I apologize for that. But this is to make sure that the streets are complete with everything that is necessary, including curbs, storm, sidewalk, and whatever underground utilities need to be, uh, in place. And it, generally you have that frontage improvement. Or basically, it's just, it's just improving, say, your, your half-street, if you will. Which is, which is a requirement on your streets, anyway.
Yeah, I just, I wanna highlight that Lee is, um, correct, and while you didn't have the benefit of reviewing the TSP, but the only place that sidewalks are required are on La Nita, like formal sidewalks.
Okay.
Um, everywhere else is, we have a yield roadway system in Manzanita. So we don't require sidewalks, uh, throughout anywhere else in the city. Um, but we would require, or curbs, we would require the gutter system be put in place, and that's part of our street standard. So we could probably, I should have caught that, finesse the language to reflect
Okay.
particular requirements based on location, but that's a good catch, Lee, thanks.
Uh, so then my comment will be, based on that, I will need to go back and rewrite this section to ensure consistency, uh, with the TSP, uh, standards, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I will make that note there. And I'll either work with you or Scott, uh, to get that information updated. Okay, well, that's good example of trying to be sure there's some consistency between all the documents they have, and that certainly shows that, okay.
Do you have anything else, Lee?
No, thank you.
Tom, do you have anything more? Frank, do you have any questions, concerns? Just looking at Frank, I don't know if you can hear me.
I don't, no, I'm sorry. Oh yeah, I know, I said I have no concerns.
Did you have any concerns, Frank? No, okay, John, how about you? You're good? Okay, then with the, um, I think we can move on with subdivision. And with, with a little bit more work, correct?
Yes, moving on to seven then. Uh, this is the application and review procedures. Uh, there are two types, type one and type two, pretty straightforward. Uh, type one is an application is made, this applies to a property line adjustment. Uh, application is made, uh, it is a staff level review. No notice goes out, uh, prior to the decision. Uh, a decision is made and notice of that decision is sent to the applicant or applicants. And at that juncture, uh, uh, whoever received the notice, uh, can go ahead and appeal that to the planning commission. This is pretty straightforward, lot line adjustments are very simple type of cases. And, um, there's probably not a lot of need to go ahead and broadcast it to the neighborhood, if you will. It's usually two owners settling a boundary between two pieces of property. Second one, type two, is, uh, as I noted earlier, these get a little more complex. And this is where an application is made. We review for completeness. Once they're complete, we mail notice of the application to folks within a certain radius of the property. Um, and at that juncture, um, they have fourteen days in which to comment. You know, they can comment whatever. Um, those comments are then incorporated in the staff report. And they need to be addressed in the staff report, you just cannot ignore them, and they're addressed in the staff report. And then finally, the decision, uh, whether it's approval, denial, whatever, is then sent to the applicants, any agencies that submitted comments, and also to any area property owners that submitted comments. So at that juncture, um, those who receive notice are given these fourteen or fifteen days to appeal to the planning commission. And if an appeal is not made, then the decision becomes final. And that's, and that's pretty straightforward. In, in the case of um, in the seven, there is also the procedures for an appeal. It goes through. Appeal to the plant commission and also if that appeal is on to the city council. Again, this is still subject to the local, uh, regulations. We do have, staff has, uh, uh, is authorized to make conditions in the report. Um, for a type one, the conditions would probably more relate to compliance with requirements and also relate to procedures. But they cannot be discretionary. In other words, the lot line adjustment will say it's approved, uh, you now have to record it. And here's the steps to record it, and those are the conditions, again, to follow procedures. With partition and subdivision, you could make changes, if you will, um, to the layout if necessary to ensure conformance. Or if there's special facility requirements that need to be addressed, those can be placed as, uh, uh, conditions as well. Overall, both type one and type two are pretty much clear and objective standards. And I think that was a good question, what is the basis of appeal? And it, it has to be shown that there was an error uh, in the decision that missed compliance with the criteria and the, say, design, the street design, whatever, um, quantitative measure is out there. So, again, this is new, this is consistent with state law. Uh, this is a change, and I also want to emphasize again that any partition or even lot line adjustment application or subdivision application, that includes the variance, the entire case, the entire case is brought forward to the planning commission for the initial decision.
Could you repeat that, Walt? You're saying that if a variance is part of the, um, part of the, uh, request, that it comes to the planning commission?
Absolutely, because that's a discretionary decision, that's not clear and objective. And it, and that's the province, if you will, of the planning commission to look at that. So you would take the entire case, we would not separate it. Staff approves the partition, subject to planning commission approval of the variance. No, the planning commission would look at the entire case.
Thank you. Right.
And, and then a, a follow-on appeal from the planning commission to the city council, is, is that based on the record previously made, or do they accept new submissions at the council level?
They are welcome to accept new information. Now, that is an interesting question. Um, with most of the communities I've worked for, I rarely, rarely ever seen a situation where the council would not accept it, but that's certainly an option if you think it's, uh, critical.
An option to what?
To, option to just.
Allow it?
Uh, just to have an option to hear the appeal on the record only.
Is, is that an option for us, or is that a decision for?
Actually, well, ultimately, this is an ordinance that will be adopted by the council. So, and they're gonna work on your recommendation. So let me ask you this. If there is an appeal of a staff decision for a land, land division, would you just want to hear it on the record, or would you want to allow new testimony?
Yeah, uh, me personally, I'm okay when it comes to us to take on more information that wasn't available to staff. Wow, I wouldn't favor that happening at the council level, because there's, it doing a de novo hearing there just kind of can nullify what the planning commission has done, which at times can be quite involved and extensive, and supposedly the planning commission has expertise in the field. And if you then go to, the, the applicant can go to the city council, cause they don't like the planning commission's decision, and then by And if you then go to, the, the applicant can go to the city council because they don't like the planning commission's decision and then by. Start it all over again. Um. Which in recent memory is sort of what happened with the first application I was involved in. It, it's, it can be frustrating, I think, to all involved. So I would prefer personally that. And, and if we can make a recommendation to city council in adopting this, I would prefer that they do it on the record as made before this commission. There's ample opportunities for the applicant or anybody else to submit all they want and we'll deliberate on it and make a decision. But you, you shouldn't be allowed to. Nullify all that by going to city council and producing a new record.
What if we, may I offer a suggestion here of saying that it will be on the record unless otherwise. Uh, decided by the council to have a de novo hearing?
Well, it refers to the procedures in ordinance ninety-five four, article ten, and I did not go back to look at that to see what that.
Yeah, I don't know what it says, but I, I think the council.
Well, I think as currently, the council has the option to hear the record or to do a de novo hearing. Um, and I imagine that that wouldn't have changed under this article ten, ninety-five four that they're reviewing right now. I, I under, I understand that your point though.
The council may in fact not want, not actually want that opportunity. They, they may not want, it may be easier in some cases just to say, hey, no, you made your record and. The planning commission said this or that and. We, we don't have to entertain a request to redo over. I don't know, but if we're, if we're not, if, if, if it's available to us to recommend something, I would prefer recommending that decisions at this council level be based. On the record as made and there not be an option for de novo, if that's beyond our authority here. Well, then it's beyond our authority and I won't say anything more about it. I, I don't know, but I, I don't. Um, in, in most. In the legal arena, you don't do that. You, you have one. Um, evidentiary hearing before a tribunal, an agency, a court or whatever. And you can go up to successive levels of appeal, the court of appeals and Supreme Court, but they decided on the record previously made. They, they, they don't do it all over again at the next level, which could be time consuming and frustrating. For everybody in the process that. We're opening up everything all over again.
Well, does the council have the, or maybe this is not a Walt question. Um, does the council have the authority? If they perceive there is new information, to throw it back to the council and say. Hey, review it based on this new, these new facts or some new information.
Do you mean kick it back to the commission?
Yeah, I think you said.
Oh, okay, um, I think it depends. I think, um, I think it depends. I think currently they. If it's appealed, it has to go to city council. And then I think he'll encase that, well, I don't know, it, when it goes to Luba, for example, if it gets appealed there. Then it gets sent back to the city council, then the city council could remand it back to the planning commission, but I, I don't believe. And Walt or Marcy can correct me if I'm wrong, that if it's appealed. That it goes back to the same body that made the decision that's getting appealed, I think it has to go before the, the city council.
Well, I think the question was whether or not there was new information and then they would kick it back. Not just based on the result of the uh, hearing.
Oh, I got you. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay, under, under article ten, the council has the option of hearing it solely on the record. Um, or allowing a de novo hearing. And they have the authority to kick it back to the planning commission for further review, so.
All of the above.
Yes. All, all of the above, so currently based on article ten, I think this is part of the updated version. The one that Scott sent me, um, yes, the council can just hear it on the record. And I will say this, when it comes to subdivisions and partitions. Since unlike a lot of other cases, like planned developments or conditional uses or even variances. These are very clear and objective. And I would hope that the city council. And, and, and Tom, I'm, I'm kind of with you on this one, would respect the decision of the planning commission. Based on determining clear and objective standards that the other met it or they didn't. And there was no wiggle room or like compromise, either you do or you don't.
Well, bear with me, this is important to me, so I want to explore it a little more. There, there is no, um. There's no reason why the applicant. Can't submit a new application. Right? There's no, the, the decision on one application is not. Uh, preemptive of any future application. So for example, if the planning commission says this, and then the applicant's got some new information and goes to the city council. And the city council says, you know, we're not going to consider that, the applicant can always go back and start over. Okay, so it's not. All right, and, and one advantage of going back and starting over again is, um. The, the process allows for notice to the citizenry at various levels and an opportunity to comment. And, and they do comment, at least on some controversial ones, and they submit their information and all that and. If, if you go from the planning commission up to the city council and then they change the record. You, you. You bypassed the comments. That seems to me they should, and I'm thinking of one example where they went up to the city council. And the proposal changed substantially from what it was at the commission level. And the city council, you know, allowed that. It allowed it even past the point where people were able to comment at the city council level. So basically you cut out the opportunity for the public to be heard. I think that's wrong. I think the decision should just. If they review what the, the commission has said on that record, whatever the decision was. Uh, if it's a no, or the applicant come back and start over again and, and we can start the citizen participation all over. So, uh, but maybe all this is moot if we can't do anything about it. But if there's a point here in what we're doing now where we can say we don't like that, I don't like. To have a de novo review with the council though, following a full hearing. At, at the commission. Done.
Sounds like you'd have to eliminate that from article ten, but who, who decides that?
Well, can we take it out of, out of here and then? It'll disappear there, I don't.
Well.
I, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know how those two relate.
Okay, I. I'm very sympathetic with what you're stating for the very simple fact that these are clear and objective. And by the time it's vetted through the planning commission, it's either. Put together properly or it's not, and I'm very sympathetic with that. May I suggest I look at that section again, and because of the unique nature of. The land division, the process and how it's structured. That just make a note in there, um, let me look at some thing about some wordsmithing here. But, um, these will be held on the record. Just, and just notify instead of referencing article ten. And the city council is welcome to, I mean, we can make our argument, if you will, it makes sense based on the type of application. And if the council as the political body, uh, uh, finds that that's not appropriate. Um, it's up to them to make that decision.
That, that's fine, that's delightful to me. I support that if you come back with language that effect. I don't know if the rest of this commission agrees with me on it before you do the drafting.
Well, I think you make a good point. And I would be fine with kind of bifurcating the appeals process, um. Hopefully, all of the, um. Decisions that we make on items in ninety-five four. Also going to be based on clear and objective standards. I think that's one of the things we've tried to do or Marcy helped us with was to make sure that what is in there is. Clear and objective. Um, and that's certainly something that we can look at again or, or, you know, have a discussion with council about. But I, I would be perfectly fine with. In this ninety-five five to have a council appeal on record.
Being as, I'll give you my two cents.
Please.
Being as, uh. As Walt has agreed to re-review this and take another look and see if he can change the language or maybe offer something to us. I'm fine with it.
You know what could occur, I think, uh. Uh, probably the legal team in the city wants to take a look at the language. And, uh, but it seems like, uh. That'd be an effective way to utilize everyone's time, including the applicant.
What do you say, John?
I think Tom and his legal wisdom have convinced me that that would be the way to go. Have the council review it based on the record. Any. Review beyond that. You know, kind of everything's on the table, but. Um, it doesn't make sense for the council to try to hit a moving target.
Okay, Frank?
Yeah, I, I agree with, um, Tom's sentiment. Um, with everything that we discussed and concerned here. My biggest thing is wh- whether or not, uh, council would neuter their own powers. Because that's where it would come from, they would have to neuter their own powers. Uh, the, the, the one good thing, though, out of this discussion from Walt, though, is these are clear and objective. Uh, decisions that are being made, so there's very little gray area. Uh, if, if council wanted to just throw the book out and then make up their own decisions, then that's the repercussions that the council would have to face. Which I don't think that they would do, but. Under these circumstances, uh, I think we're probably in pretty safe territory either way.
Okay, um, did you have anything else?
No.
On this section as a whole?
Well, I don't have anything nearly exciting as what, uh, Tom just. Uh, I'm going to limit mine to, and Walt, you know what's coming, it's called the edit. Um, he had seven oh, where is it? Seven oh two oh, section I appeals. Second line says decision made, uh, I think you want to put appeal in there?
Yeah, you're missing a word.
Walt knows me, I don't offer those opportunities, he feels lost.
Thank you, Lee.
Good catch.
No, it, the meeting was not the same until that moment.
Oh, okay.
And Lee would all worry about you if you didn't find. Well, see, but this is much more substantive.
Now who to ask to copy edit now?
That's a close reader there.
Uh, yeah, I just have a, a question of Walt, uh, on the. Uh, submittal requirements and essentially the, the threshold for getting the expedited permit process. It speaks to, uh, great lots or parcels that allow building residential units at eighty percent. Or more of the maximum net density permitted by the zoning designation of the site. And so, uh, I, I don't know if we have a definition of maximum net density. And I'm imagining that the intent is number of units and not the F A R. And as an example, if the maximum net density was considered the F A R. That a single family residence could go in the expedited permit process. So I think we just need to make sure that there's language that. Uh, speaks to the number of units as the maximum net density.
Marcy, I, I, if you can respond to that, you've been working more on the housing and.
It's, uh, it's section.
Yeah, have we jumped forward to eight? Are we, can we, can we maybe hold it until we get to eight? Are we done, are we done talking about seven?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's okay. You're just keeping us on track. Anything from either of you, uh. Participants on the, on the wall there. To add to just, uh, section seven before we move on. I said. Did you say something, Frankie?
Karen, if you're talking about the. Two of us on Zoom, I am good with it the way we just discussed it.
In here.
Okay, so let's move on to eight and.
Well, then, um.
Walk us through and then you can be first.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Walt to walk us through.
Okay, um, when we looked at this a couple of weeks ago. Uh, part of the discussion of expedite and middle housing. It really kind of became apparent to me that putting the two together. Probably create more confusion than clarity. And so I went back and took article eight and split it into two new articles. Article eight is just expedited land divisions. And article nine is middle housing land divisions. Everything that you saw the last time or looked through in article eight. There are no changes except one. That clarifies under item eight dot O one O applicability. The article may apply to all partitions and subdivisions. This is just to let an applicant know that this is certainly an option. When I split it up, though, is something. Became readily imperative, both the expedited land division and middle housing process. Is exactly the same. So in other words, you don't need to go through an expedited land division. To get a middle housing project, the middle housing land division is the exact same process. Application is deemed complete, uh, we have twenty-one days to do it instead of thirty. And we have to come up with final decision in sixty-three days. The other thing too is that unlike the typical type two application. Notice is mailed of the request to the area owners. And after a decision is made, everyone also receives a notice of the decision. So this one has some very thorough, and if you will, redundant notice. Both prior, just at the point of application and at the point of decision. So area owners will be aware of this particular, uh, these types of applications. Everything through here again is consistent with article eight, but it's separated. So we have the process and just starting out on article eight expedited land division. Applicability is still the same. Um, and, and I'm hoping Marcy can add a little bit more detail on the, uh, density issue. We have the application decision notice and appeal notice is exactly the same. Submittal requirements follow up through, um, section six dot O one O, which is for subdivision. We have the same detailed level of application, uh, requirements. The criteria for approval is exactly the same for an expedited land division. These are limited to residential types of development. Goal five resource areas are excluded, except it's open space. Um, the division cannot provide dwellings or structures located in the beach. Um, the division cannot provide dwellings or structures located in the beach, beaches and dunes overlay zone. And again, there's certain standards that are unique to an expedited, uh, division here. Conditions of approval, very straightforward. They have to follow up with what they're doing. In other words, there has to be consistency between the proposal and the conditions. And the final plat follows through with whether it's a subdivision or a partition and the appeals process to the planning commission is the same. So for an expedited land division, everything related to an expedited land division is in Article eight. Everything related to a middle housing land division is in Article nine, but the language is exactly the same from the original document I sent out, other than splitting it up. And again, I want to emphasize the process for both is exactly the same. So in effect, if you're doing a middle housing land division, you're following the expedited land division process anyway. So there's, there's no need to go back and forth. Middle housing, you do it that way. Expedited for say a partition or subdivision, you do it that way. So I don't know if I added to the clarity or, uh, whatever, but um, this is consistent, as I said, with what was done before. It just split up into two different articles.
Well, I, I have a question, and that is what kind of a land division would not fall under an expedited process? With the variance request?
Correct.
It, it, and that's it?
That's the only thing I could think of because at that point it is not expedited. There's a variance, there's discretionary, and we're going to the planning commission. And if I recall, under ninety five dash four, if there's multiple applications for a project, it is heard at the highest level. So if there's a variance, it has to go to the planning commission.
So, and, and this is only in the, um, residential zones that have this expedited process available? Is it, it's not available to a commercial development or mixed use develop?
Industrial public, it's for residential zoned land only.
I think it goes back to that eighty percent trigger is that it only becomes expedited if it's creating more housing. And, uh, but didn't meet that threshold would not go through the expedited process. It'd go through.
The expedited middle housing land division applies if it's middle housing and you're making a several child lots out of the parent lot, according to the middle housing land division procedure. But the Article eight expedited land division applies to a residential land division that's not necessarily meeting the middle housing requirements. But you do have to meet five A or B. That was my understanding and partly why we separated these two things out. And if you, if it's timely, I can address how we would, uh, how we would apply A, five A, if, if, um, Bert, you'd like that answer.
Still trying to comprehend what you said. Keep going.
Yeah, maybe we need to go. Well, anyway, I'll just jump into, um, five A is we, in our definitions in ninety five four, we have a, a measurement for maximum density. It's the highest permissible number of dwelling units allowed on a specific property or in a given area. Um, explains that they are, these densities are calculated based on gross acreages. It, it talks about what is excluded. Um, with fractional units rounded down to the next whole unit. So that's the method that we would use to calculate the maximum density. I believe that the maximum density is going to be set by the city council's decision on the minimum lot size. So, and it looks like they may be going to a minimum lot size of fifteen hundred for townhouses and one thousand two hundred and fifty for all other housing.
Don't think they're planning on going to one thousand two hundred and fifty for all other housing.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Leila?
We don't think that they're planning to allow lots on smaller, smaller lots, smaller than fifteen hundred square feet. My takeaway.
Okay.
That meeting.
What was good, my takeaway also actually, that the fifteen hundred was what they felt comfortable with.
So the minimum lot sizes you, as you, uh, understood at the hearing or at the work session that city council has, was they were landing on fifteen hundred for all housing? Am I hearing that right?
I think that was my understanding.
Okay.
No, for sure on townhomes, but that's, I think, something we still have to get clarification on.
I was confused through much of that session. Know that I can help. That clearly there was some resistance to the size of lots that the commission was proposing. To how small they were.
So I guess, um, we can still hold like this, the, the way that A, five A is articulated here still holds true. And maximum density as defined in our ninety five four definition still holds true. The question is, what is that number?
It really would say you, if you did a duplex, you would be in expedited process, I think. Is that correct?
If you meet five A, you haven't, you're entitled to an expedited land division process.
Actually, you wouldn't because that would be only sixty six percent of the density. So you, you'd have to do three units in order to be expedited. A typical five thousand square foot lot. Am I reading that right? At eighty percent?
Um, I can't, I'm not with you on the math. Are you? Maybe help us all out by going through it again?
Yeah, let's, uh, if it, it, it's sixty six percent. If, if you can only do three units on a five thousand square foot lot, two of those units would equal to sixty six percent of the total number of units. So it wouldn't be an expedited process. But if you did three units on that lot, you would be under the expedited process, I think is what it's saying. Cause that's more than sixty six percent. Or, you know, it would be eighty percent. Excuse me. If you
Maybe it's not possible to take advantage of this Article eight on a five thousand square foot lot. But if you had a larger lot and you actually were subdividing it to, down to the fifteen hundred square feet every single lot, uh, wouldn't you be entitled to this, um, Article eight? So, I mean, it kind of, it may work in a way that we desire where it doesn't apply to infill as much as it applies to larger lot subdivision.
I think, I think based on the eighty percent, you're looking at larger pieces. In other words, a two acre piece, let's say minimum lot size is for the sake of argument, five thousand square feet. You're looking at sixteen lots for two acres. So as long as you're doing eighty percent of that, so what's that, eleven or so units, you can go ahead with the expedited. But Marcy, I think you're right. You're really looking at bigger pieces.
Smaller with more, uh, build out. I mean, either way, eighty percent is eighty percent regardless of the lot size.
I think it's flexible enough that it'll, you know, the trigger is at eighty percent, which is trying to get more middle housing.
You can still do this with the five thousand.
FAR, I think it seems pretty reasonable. Can, can I ask some larger picture questions here? What, what, what is the point of this? I mean, how much expedited is the process? Okay.
I think we talked about this last time, and if it's still true, it was that you would apply, you could get this land division at the same time that you applied for your building permit. So this is not, so the partition and the subdivision that we talked about before, they, those are more, especially the partitions, maybe more set up for someone who's subdividing and then selling off the lots. But Articles eight and nine are specifically intended for, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Walt, but they're, I think, more designed for um, someone who's both, they have their building permit, they building application and their subdivision plan all at the same time.
But they can certainly do that.
I didn't see that that was referenced anywhere in here, that, that building, it was concurrent with the building uh, permit application for all of the lots or I don't know how that, I don't know how that works. But that's, uh, we had talked about that before, that the expedited, at least middle housing would have building permits at the same time, and I don't believe that it refers to that as a concurrent. So we, I believe we need to make that clear here.
No, middle housing, you would have to have the building permit. That, that is absolutely essential. It doesn't mention it under expedited land divisions, but frankly, it's, it's not critical. Nothing prohibits anyone for, again, let's look at that two acre parcel, nothing prohibits anyone from getting a building permit to put a house on the parcel. In the process, they're still welcome to part, partition the property. Just make sure the house will be placed in a location that meets all the setbacks. So this doesn't prevent that. But I think you're thinking middle housing is really where building permit and land division go hand in hand. Correct, Marcy? That's, that's, that's.
That's, that's the, uh, per state statute. That's the one that we have to hit. And like to the letter is what you've, what you put into Article nine.
Okay, I'm still a little lost here. So I assume that the legislature passed this in order to expedite the process of developing housing uh, and enforce it on those local governments that are dragging their feet on. Which I assume maybe we're not, but, um, and there's nothing preventing local government from expediting the process without being told to, right? I mean, and, and is it possible for our city to, to meet these deadlines? The expedited deadlines? That's not burdensome on staff?
Well, truthfully, I understand the expedited has another component. And that is notification of area owners before and after the decision. Whereas a straight ahead land division, you only notify, uh, the applicant and those who commented of the decision. So there's, there's a little bit more of a, I know it's a nuance, but, uh, the area property owners are a little bit more aware of the, of the, uh, process. Also, you're looking at density, but one other thing that we're not talking about, though, is item five B. And that can be to households that meet a certain low income standard. So that's also something to, uh, bear in mind. It's not just about density. It's, uh, either or.
Okay, well, um, to the extent I'm following the discussion so far, I'm, I'm okay with speeding up the process as long as staff can handle it. And I'm not sure what exactly it's going to speed up under five A and B, but if something lands in there, great, but speeding it up. The notice provisions, I had some questions about that. If we're on to that. Okay, cause Walt, you said that you have to give notice of the decision. I'm looking at the new state law, HB twenty one thirty eight. And if I'm reading it right, it says that local government shall provide notice of the decision to the applicant, but may not require that notice be given to any other person. It, it sounds like it's prohibiting notice to anyone beyond the applicant of the decision. Do you have?
Well.
If you look at, it's in the section headed expedited in middle housing land divisions, it's section fourteen, I guess, of the fourteen through seventeen of the bill.
To, to be honest, um, Tom, we have not been putting the land division code through twenty one thirty eight yet. We have been looking at twenty one thirty eight in anticipation of ninety five four. Um, that nine, uh, twenty one thirty eight is currently going through rulemaking. And it, cities are will be required to comply with those rules and the model code that's being drafted right now by Jan, or um, upon January first, twenty twenty seven, but honestly.
I, I appreciate the doing rulemaking, but I'm looking at the law. And, and the law in section twenty pretty clearly says that you cannot, the local government cannot require that notice be given to any other person besides the applicant. So, but before we adopt something here that says that, I, I think we would need to review.
Uh, Tom, it says here, the notice of the decision must be sent to the applicant and those who received the original notice under subsection two, the agencies, neighboring property owners, neighborhood organizations, et cetera. Only the applicant can appeal the expedited land division. I'm, I'm looking at the House Bill twenty one thirty eight as well.
Which one are you, are you looking at page eighteen of Mike?
Exact page on here, but it says the decision approval, sixty three days, yada, yada. But it's right underneath there, it says the notice of the decision must be sent to, and it doesn't say anything about it just being the applicant. So I don't think I have the same thing that you're looking at, but.
Do you have section twenty of the bill?
Uh, where am I?
So, section twenty of the bill amends ORS one ninety seven, three, six, five, which is the statute that talks about these appeals.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, so.
Okay, so it, and go down to where it's amending one ninety seven, seven, nine, seven to a local government. E shall provide notice of the decision to the applicant, but may not require that notice be given to any other person.
Yeah, what I'm reading is it just the, that anybody that received the original notice, the agencies, neighboring property owners and neighborhood organization, so. But I don't think I'm in the same format as yours.
Well, this raises the question, do we go ahead and make a change now? Or wait until the rules are in place?
I mean, uh, just to go back up, Frank, I think what you're reading is this, is the, this former paragraph C, which is being deleted.
That doesn't even makes any sense, though. Why would they limit the notification process afterwards?
Well, here, here's the reason why is that they don't, and, and this goes to something that's presented up above in new B. Uh, the local government may not hold a hearing on the application or allow any third party to intervene to oppose the application. That, what I understand these provisions were intended to do is to prevent anybody from opposing or stopping or objecting to a middle housing partition. Which begs the question why, it, they, they want to stop, they want to stop NIMVs from holding up middle housing development by appearing at hearings and objecting, or then afterwards certainly appealing from the decision. They want to take those people out of the process, and I think the idea those people out of the process, and I think the idea is all your objections should be at the front end when the city decides whether or not they're going to allow middle housing and where. And then for, then after, the process should proceed automatically and people can't come in and after the fact and say, yeah, I like, I like middle housing, I just don't want it next to me. And I'm going to object to your, you give me notice of the hearing, I'm going to object and, and impose the whole thing. So I, I. Well, rambling about the process here, what I'm saying is I, I see a clear inconsistency between the new bill and what we're saying in this proposed.
We're facing a, of a conundrum here, though. Manzanita didn't have to do any of this, but agreed with other cities in Tillamook County and the county uh, with a separate Senate bill to go ahead and participate in the program. And as such, I don't know what the language specifically said, but I don't know if we're if there's something in the Senate bill that says you must comply with these provisions, but it doesn't say anything about subsequent changes. In other words, I don't know if this is don't know if I'm saying it correctly, but if we go beyond, is it beyond our, our writ? Is, is it? Is that something?
As I'm reading this, and I, I don't want to belabor this too long, it's, it's not an option. Uh, for whatever reason, the legislature, well, for the reason that our local representatives asked for it, the law now requires every city in Tillamook County to comply with the middle housing laws, and the middle housing laws as amended July thirty-one of this year now have these new provisions that um, don't allow notice.
So Tom, the provisions, they don't go into effect until January first, twenty twenty-seven. And we are, we're in a, we're in a limbo. We've been sort of taking it on a case by case basis where most of what's in ninety-five four that's being proposed is going to comply, it turns out, because you, you're very, you were very forward thinking about it, and it turns out that twenty-one thirty-eight is going to line up exactly with what we're doing in terms of all of the housing types being allowed in all the zones, et cetera. But we didn't go down the path of ninety-five five with that in mind, that we were going to anticipate the changes that were going to be needed by January first, twenty twenty-seven in ninety-five five. Not to say that we can't, but it's, but that's probably why you're not seeing the language in here that is consistent with what's in twenty-one thirty-eight.
You, you're right, that the legislature could change everything before these officially take effect, but uh, you know, drafting them in a way now that in hopes that they won't be required, that they'll, that they'll change it before then seems to me not the most efficient way to go. All of that aside, let me offer this, forget about the law, what we have to do. We don't allow anybody to appeal the decision except the applicant. What, why are we giving notice? What, what, why are you giving people notice to something they can't do anything about?
Marcy, it sounds to me like what the state is trying to do is throw uh, subdividing property for middle housing into the same process that we go through if we are submitting plans for a single family house. Which is no, you know, we can still do that, but um, you, you submit both planning and building permit at the same time, and the staff reviews it all at the same time. And when it's all done, they notify you. And there is no appeal, there is no objecting to it by anyone. It's just, um, you know, it, it's the criteria for developing a single family house, including planning and, you know, property and sewers and water and drainage, everything is already established now. And so staff reviews it and it's either in compliance or it isn't. And if it is or isn't, you get notified of that. And it sounds like this subdivision or partition uh, in a, in a case of middle housing, uh, where you've got a duplex or a triplex on your property and you want to, it, it's, there is no appeals process or there is no objecting from anyone of the public.
That's, that's the way you're characterizing it, is, it's true, and, and we're responding to Senate Bill four fifty-eight, which came out right on the heels of House Bill two thousand and one. So it's been there as these, these two Senate Bill four fifty-eight for expedited middle housing land division has been required of cities for as long as House Bill two thousand and one has been, and by virtue of being a Tillamook County city, and therefore subject to seven, Senate Bill four, four oh six, you are required to do just the same as a large city would, but in that regard. So you, we're, the, I think the question right now here is, should we be looking forward to, should we be complying in advance with um, the changes that twenty-one thirty-eight is making to the land division code? And yet I think that we should be. I do think it's expedient and why not? So if we need to make some of these changes about notification, then we should do that.
And I agree, that's uh, what I, what I understand the goal of the state is similar to our goal. We want it to be a relatively seamless process and at the staff level. And I, I think we might as well do it now, cause um, I, it, whether it changes in the future, you know, we can't know, but um, the way Tom read the new state statute is the way I think we want it. So I'm in favor of following it as best as possible now.
Sustained the interest of um, trying to put this into a like, direction for us, could I characterize what I'm hearing as, we should move forward with Article nine A to nine, and we should also change um, the can, the notification to be consistent with the requirements that are coming out of twenty-one thirty-eight. Would that be?
That's what I think.
Is that what you're asking about, Tom?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with, like I was saying, with, with eight and nine, if it speeds up the process and it doesn't, you know, crush staff, then great. Um, I'm all for that. I just, I find that the notice provision is it is problematic, because it's not consistent with the law, and I also think that you start giving out notice to people and they want to, they want to comment, I got notice. I, I'm just now waking up to this and I want to complain about it, I want to do something, and it's a, it's a means to uh, slow down the process that we're trying to, to expedite. Um, and so I would favor taking it out.
Yeah, we don't allow people to comment.
Comply with the law as it's enacted unless it's going to change.
Now, well, I, first of all, I disagree, uh, Tom, only because we're not sure, uh, what I read and what you read is correct. And the other thing is, even though they can't object, doesn't nullify the fact that they should be notified. If you're a neighbor, if you're a part of the neighborhood group, if you're part of anybody that was contacted and participated in this, to be notified on what the result is is to me a common courtesy. I should not have to live in a neighborhood where something's about to happen and I've not been notified, even if I can't object to it. I should know that in six months from now, this is what's going to happen. That's the whole point of the notification system. If you've participated in any of that prior to that, I shouldn't just sit at home in the dark going, I don't know what they're going to do. They never told me, and I don't follow the meetings or I don't go, you should be notified. If you, it, it, just because I can't object doesn't mean I shouldn't be notified.
Frank, you're saying if you've got a, a lot next to your house and somebody wants to build something that is statutorily allowed, you should be notified of it?
No, I said, no, no, that's not what I said.
Well, I think that's what you're saying.
What I said was, what is, what I read in the bill, those who receive the original notice under subsection two, the agencies, neighboring property owners, neighborhood organizations, anybody that was notified initially that there was something going on needs to be notified of what the result is. That's all I'm saying. To me, that's just a common courtesy, that, that just, that makes total sense. I don't see why that is an issue. But if I'm wrong and it's not required, but that's, the, the, what I'm reading is it's required. When twenty-one thirty-eight became law in July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, even though everything doesn't have to be implemented until January one, twenty twenty-seven enforcement, uh, it's still what the law is, but uh, unless I'm, I, I, you know, either way, it just seems like a common courtesy. If you were involved, if you weren't involved in it at all, then, then you don't care, you don't get notified, you're not on anybody's list, you don't get notified. You didn't have a prior objection, you didn't have any prior participation in any of this, then nobody's going to notify you. But if you did, and you're a house, uh, HHOA or whatever the groups are, that, I, I think they should know what, what the decisions were and what's going to happen. That's all.
Anybody else want to jump in?
Well, I guess I would say, uh, you, we need to make sure we all are operating under whatever the law is and, and the law that's anticipated to be coming like a freight train down against us. And uh, I'd say, let's be forward thinking and be consistent with the upcoming law. And it's probably more of a discussion of this, with the legislature about notification and what was passed in the state.
So consistent with the public record of the open meetings law, can I communicate by email with Frank so we can work out which one of us is reading the, the still bill correctly? That's, I just can't loop any of the rest of you in.
As long as you notify us, Walt.
Maybe the city attorney's going to think.
Yeah, I think maybe the cleanest way is I'll confer with Marcy and legal and we'll let you know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good either way, but I'm just saying that, that, yeah, so either way.
Well, you've, you've. I just wanted to announce, sorry, everyone, that I have to leave for another hearing in five minutes, but Walt will handle things, Walt and Leila will handle things to the end, so I'll hear about it later. But sorry, got to duck out.
Marcy.
Bye, Marcy.
See, before you leave, there's some uh, language in, I think, section five, that I think you and Walt need to work through in terms of uh, private drives and access easements and stuff like that. And uh, the diagrams that you showed of uh, you know, townhouses and stuff like that would be illegal if we passed that to section.
Thanks, thanks Bert. I highlighted that for um, discussion with Leila and Walt.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks for, for heading up that, for, for whatever, shepherding that to the, to the end. All right, bye, everyone.
It's Marcy.
Hi, Marcy.
While we're on the um, sections regarding decision notices, I just have a, just a nitpick. And that is in subsection two of both um, Article eight and Article nine. Um, it just refers to the community development director's decision, and I think everywhere else we have indicated that it's the city managers.
It should be.
So I just, just to make sure that we don't.
Love a community. Some day, maybe.
Love being a community developer.
And I would just change that to city manager since, yes, since you're the decision maker.
Yeah.
And before Lee jumps on my case, rightly so, we're not in Clackamas County, we're in Tillamook County, and I did see that, okay. In fact, honestly, I agree. And then the other thing too, there were a couple of other organizational changes I need to make, it kind of referenced two different sections to clean up, so I want to let you know that I did find that, that's where we're going through this discussion. At this juncture, um, I'm kind of kind of not certain what the next step would be. I, I would think that there's some rewriting that we need to work on, some of it's going to take some legal counsel direction. Um, I also did some rewriting based on what you've done before, uh, ear, earlier comments. And also take into account, for example, the whole sidewalk and walk and uh, improvement uh, issue. Um, I'm suggesting that we, Marcy and I, at this juncture, unless there's other questions or points of discussion, kind of go back to the drawing board with these comments, look at HB twenty-one thirty-eight, get the input where we can. And instead of working on a modified layout, just come back with a clean copy of ninety-five dash five for you to um, look at, would, what does, what do you think? I, I'm just trying to make sure that we move along, but by the same token um, follow through with what you folks need.
Before we do that, are there any other questions or comments, suggestions on sections eight or nine?
Yeah, I've got a question, Walt, on nine, nine oh three oh the submittal requirements. It references that all buildings and structures on a resulting law or parcel must comply with essentially the residential specialty code. Well, it, it would indicate to me the way that that's written, that it has to comply, even if it's an existing building. And most structures aren't going to comply with the current code. Uh, they may well comply with code when it was uh, built, but am I reading that wrong, or is, does that refer to all buildings, whether new or existing?
I think that's the case for all the structures, because for example, I think a common way of approaching this would be dividing a duplex, but you got to make sure there's a firewall between the two units. And so that is part of the structural code. I could follow up on that. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a reasonable question. I just think that everything has to comply with the structural code, and that, and that's always been my uh, reading.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with that upon completion, but to expect a designer to put their stamp on something and saying, yeah, all these buildings on the site, he, the current code is that's, that's a far reach.
In other words, the language should read, upon completion, all buildings shall, all existing and new structures shall comply.
Yes.
Okay.
Would make me happy, thank you.
We go way back.
That's all I have on eight or nine.
Okay. Anything more, Bert?
I'm eight or nine, but got to get that easement step sort of thing.
Any more on eight or nine?
No.
Frank, any more on eight or nine?
No.
John, any more on eight or nine?
Hmm, no.
With some questions. Okay, um, what's our next step? Go back to the beginning? Go through the changes that Walt has already submitted? In terms, they meet what we need, or is there big discussion needed on any particular topic?
I, once again, I, I, I really think if we're going to be effective in voting middle housing, we have to, Walt and uh, Marcy really need to sort out the air lane, driveway easements. Um, I, I don't, we want to exclude uh, easements on a small lot from the FAR calculations, because that would be atypical of how putting call is typically done in a promotion of middle housing. And so there's a range of issues. And so there's a range of issues tied to, you know, which was a reasonable. Uh, language. In the traditional subdivision model with. Big lots and streets and all that kind of stuff, but doesn't really. Uh, it's not applicable to uh, middle housing, I think. And so we just need to make sure that the language. Does a free clue or down zone. Lots. Uh, inadvertently. Uh, beyond what the state's. Law is. Through the standards around uh, easements and FAR and things like that. And uh, it could be a really significant. Issue. Now, I I think it's just a a conversation with Walt and uh, Marcy to walk through all that. To make sure that the diagrams that uh, Marcy showed. Uh, which were, you know, a lot of nice uh, site planning. Uh, wouldn't be able to be done. If. Under this particular uh. Language. And so I just, it's really critical that the two get together and we just kind of fine tune that to make sure that it's going to work okay. Big list, but I I think it's better for those two just to kind of.
Marcy was, Marcy was working on some. Uh, schematics to show the differences between what would be. A private access easement division and also um, middle housing. Types of access. So um, she's been working on that and probably the next time we get together, we can kind of. Explain how the differences align. So you definitely have the middle housing access approach, but also another one that may be more. In line with a traditional uh, partition layout. And so I I I think I think it's there. I think it's a matter of drawing some pictures, if you will.
So they don't have any problem with the um, changes that on the latest draft from Walt, the uh. The redlining showing new additions, the strikeout showing. Any changes. So all of that is good by me, but I'm persuaded by Bert's comment that there's some work yet to be done that I think can be done. Outside this commission. Um. And maybe Walt, you and Marcy can talk with Bert as well.
Okay.
He's the one that has concerns the most. About it and would understand it better than me.
Can do.
So. Our next scheduled meeting. Is. Not eighth. Keep wanting to say nine. It's September eighth, and that is the date. Certainly, we are supposed to hold a. Hearing on this. Ninety five five, and it's not ready for us to hold a hearing on. So we need to just renotice. Um, um, the public hearing on this to get.
Um, I haven't heard back about that today because Marcy and I had a discussion in anticipation of this, so. I will get back to you because we did a measure fifty six notice, we did a date certain, and so my question is whether or not we can just. Open the hearing and then just continue it in October. This is my hope. Okay, in that case, because yeah, we're not ready for it.
Okay, so we would. Open the hearing. Then continue the hearing.
To October.
To October. But use the rest of the meeting to just work through to discuss the changes.
Yeah.
Is that? For everybody else. Okay. I hate to. Push the, you know, push people off again, but we we want to make sure that we have. A. A thorough understanding of what we're going to ask. The council to adopt and then B, that um, we give. People plenty of time to read it and understand it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. You had no problems. Right?
No, I just I appreciate.
It was Tom. You had no problems with the with the revisions. In sections one through three.
Yeah, I had no problems with uh, the hopeful changes that Bert's talking about.
Yeah, I concur with that. I thought Walt did a pretty good job of summarizing and. Editing that material. Um, but. This certainly uh. Certainly can understand. Bert's issues and it's about clarity, right? It's about. Making sure that we all view this thing the same way.
So it's really for the applicants benefit in what the goal. Of the middle housing.
Right, right. So, yeah.
Our staff, too.
Well, yeah.
Who don't think about you guys often enough?
Let's do our job better.
Yeah. Uh, Frank, did you have any questions or comments, issues with the revisions to sections one through three that Walt already gave us?
No.
No. Okay, how about you, John?
Same. No. They were good.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good news. Well done, Walt. Um, so I guess instead I will come back September eighth and um. Continue this discussion.
Okay.
Unless anyone, oh, we should. We have minutes. Need, let's not forget that. Minutes of our August eleventh. Let's, did you get a copy of them? Are there any additions, corrections? Changes?
Well, I'd like to say, Karen, that the copy I got did not have me in attendance and. I think there's probably visual evidence that I was at some place, so.
I believe you were.
We'll change that. Thanks.
Make sure to add that. Thank you, John.
And you're not easy to overlook.
Thank you, Tom, I think.
Any any other? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
To approve the minutes from the August eleven. Planning Commission meeting, as many.
Second.
I can thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all right. We have proofed minutes. Uh, any other updates for us, either from Scott or from Leila?
Nothing from me. Scott?
Oh, no, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Okay, good.
Walt, you're doing a great job. You've got an octopus. You're trying to kind of get all the arms into the box, so.
Yeah.
Some of them.
I kind of like the idea of herding cats, but that's that's.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Thanks, all. Yep, thanks, everybody. We'll close this. Meeting of the Planning Commission and see you in a couple of weeks.